Tickets are seven for ages three and up. Reserve your tickets in advance. The HBE Drama Club is also hosting a spaghetti dinner with the cast of Andy Junior. Friday, December 2nd from 5 to 8 p.m. at the Ellis Lodge in Port Jervis. At the rec center, co-ed youth basketball at the ASK Gym. Registration for boys and girls in grades three through six. For the 2016-2017 season will be held on Saturday, December 3rd from 9 to 12. Monday, December 5th from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. Tuesday, December 6th from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. And Wednesday, December 7th from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. Registration will take place at the youth center. And finally, the next Board of Education meeting will be held on December 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calcom. Appreciate it. Senior Veterans Report, Mr. Siegel?
Thank you, but the only thing I have is to remind people that the Pearl Harbor Ceremony will be on the bridge at 1 p.m. on Sunday, the 4th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing, we're going to open up the continuation of the 2017 budget hearing. If anybody would like to come up and speak in regards to the budget and do so now, please just state your name and the ward you live in or the town you live in. This is on the budget only, 2017 budget.
Good evening, Mayor, common council, department heads, and legal representation, the City of Port Jervis people. I just wanted to ask at this time what the budget increase is thought to be.
Currently, they're up to 11.92, and that's restoring the complete sewer reserve, adding the 18th officer after March, adding the watershed caretaker full-time after May 1st. They took a reduction for K-9 contributions. They had an increase in health insurance. They decreased the ban interest funding. They decreased the assessment value. There was a minor line item change of a reduction and a reduction by the CVA of $30,000, which put it at 11.92.
Is there possibly going to be a vote on this number tonight?
No, 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 no. There's still a workshop next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone from the council? I'm going to just turn this over to Ms. Trove. In looking at this, quick numbers, and you'll be looking at, I'm sure, line-by-line items, but I believe you can, and I spoke with the chief on this, I would take away that 18th officer, reevaluate it six months into the budget year, and look at it maybe towards the end of the year. And I would, instead of restoring that whole sewer reserve, I would do half, and that'll take you down to 8.76.
Thanks. I had already spoken to the chief about the officer and some other things. I had asked all the department heads to review their line items and come back to me with any reasonable.
Talk, talk, and talk.
Sorry. I had already spoken to all the department heads after we went through and the budget went up to 11.9. This is not the final budget. We just wanted to know what the number would be if we did add 18th officer, if we did put the caretaker position back in, just so we could work with the real numbers instead of maybe it's going to be this, maybe it's not. But I had already spoken to the chief. I asked all the department heads to come back with any sort of realistic and reasonable cuts that they could make to lower this, and the next budget workshop's going to be on December 6th.
Thank you. Not hearing any, we'll continue to keep this, I'm sorry?
6 p.m.
6 p.m. We'll continue to keep the 2017 public hearing for the budget open for the next council meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Foster, second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. We also have a public hearing for the 2016 local law number 15.
It's 16.
Oh, okay, thank you. Is that what I heard you say, 16? When I was saying 2017, you were really screwing me up, but 16. Council permission to waive fees. Ms. Wasenager?
Basically, there's been a local law submitted amending section 280-10 of chapter 280 of the Port Jervis City Code permitting the common council to waive fees which have previously been established or amended by the common council. And this is a local law. Previously, in the law, all there was was the ability by resolution to change a fee, but not to waive a fee. Now, that is the distinction with this law.
Thank you. If there's anybody in from the public that would like to speak about this, please go forward.
Would you care if you had an example of the fees you're speaking of?
It would be anything from a water fee to a sewer fee to dog licensing fee, any fee that is set by the council.
Building parade fees?
Building permit fees.
Okay. This came up many times when I was building official, and it's always declined when someone came for a building permit to be waived because it seemed that one organization gets waived, and the next thing you know, everybody's asking for a waiver. So I would caution you on that portion of the local law.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Ms. Randazzo. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. No presentations. I now open the floor to public comment. Anybody can come up and speak on any subject for up to five minutes. Please just state your name and the ward that you live in or the town that you live in.
My name is Kathy Hyless. I'm the president of the Orange County, not the Orange County, Port Jervis Council for the Arts, president of the Orange County, Port Jervis Council for the Arts, I'm sorry. We have a concert that's going to be held on December 9th at the Deer Park Reformed Church. That's at 30 East Main Street in Port Jervis. This is going to be special this year because we are dedicating the last song of the evening to the three men that we lost this year, Frank Bell, Bob Ritchie, and Dennis Simmons, who are very important to Port Jervis. And we are going to be sending tickets to their homes so that their families can hopefully attend the concert. It doesn't mean they have to, but we felt it was important that they be honored for the end of the year, especially this year. Also, Joan Kellumback, who's one of our members and who's also a very important artist in the community, was also honored by the Orange County, the Orange County Arts Association. She got an award for the best artist of the year from Port Jervis. And so this was a nice honor that Port Jervis is usually, seems to be forgotten when things come, you know, our little corner of the county seems to get to be forgotten. So it was very nice that she got this award. And we went to the dinner for her, and we were delighted that she was able to get that award. And I also want to point out that all the art that's on the walls, that's some of the things that we do. These pictures that are here in the city hall, we also have them at the hospital, at different banks, and we do this all year long. So art is available all around the area. So we try to make people aware of the fact that there is art in the area, there are artists in our area, and there are things going on, and we have a wonderful art, I don't know, my mind is just, I'm sorry, tonight, I really, we have wonderful art and artists in our area, and I think we need to be aware of that. I want to also mention that George Belcher is going to be videoing, videoing, videoing...
Recording. Taping. Recording.
Taping, I'm sorry, my God, taping the concert for us. And he's done that every year since we've been doing the concerts. So I just wanted to note that. Also, let me see, all right, all right. You can get tickets at Gina's Hope Trust, the Herb Shop, JJ's International Delicatation, Smith Plumbing and Heating Upfront Exhibition, Wookie's Deli. Oh, there's going to be also an original Santa Claus painting by local artist Joan Kellumback and a Hall and Tate basket. The concert is always very popular. I really hope you're going to attend. Dan Bradley's Big Band is going to be the band that's featured. He's very popular. The tickets are $15 in advance and $20 at the door. I hope you all can find time to come. I think you'll have a wonderful time. The nice thing about it is, at the end of the concert, the women that are in the church always have goodies and stuff, and at the end, you get to go, you know, at the end, you go behind, in the back of the concert, and you sit and you have cookies, and you talk with the other people, and it's sort of like a nice neighborhood thing, kind of reminiscent of when people used to get together and do this sort of thing on a more neighborhood sort of basis. And it makes it just a very personal, pleasant experience. So I hope that people will come and enjoy it. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Hyless. Anyone else?
Good evening again. Wayne Kidney, First Ward. The reason I'm up here tonight now has to do with what I learned at the budget meeting nearly two weeks ago concerning the sewer fees. I don't know how much more discussion there has been. I know that my councilwoman, that would mean, discussed what she was doing, and I was happy to hear that. However, what dismayed me entirely was to hear from the sacred treasurer that instead of the $630,000 being collected, being put into a fund directly for sewer infrastructure repairs over the next, how many years it's going to take to get $99 million, has been changed to where the large portion of that money is being used for sewer operations costs, and only $135,000 is now being saved per year in the account out of $600,000 now that's been allotted for this year since there was a shortfall last year. This is not what the public was told was going to happen with these sewer fees. I'm appalled to hear about this, and I have to say, you know, it's going to be hard enough to get to $99 million with $600,000 a year, but you are never going to get there with $135,000 a year. And by the time you get anywhere close, the bill for that infrastructure is going to probably double. I just don't believe what I heard, and I'd like to see or hear why this public was deceived. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Our good friend Ed Groh, Third Ward, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for all the council notes that did come out. Did you make up your mind yet, Mr. Decker, whether you're going to sell that land?
Well, we talked about it.
Did you make up your mind? That's a good question.
Are we selling part of the land? Yes, we are selling part of the land. Well, I shouldn't say, I'm recommending that they sell part of the land. They made the decision.
When you got out of your Jeep, you said, "Here's the map, and this is what we're selling."
Come on, Ed.
Don't tell me you didn't.
Ed, come on.
Over there.
I wanted to show you.
Your 16-point turn to get in my driveway, when I was standing in the street. Your 16-point turn with a Jeep. I know you don't want to talk to them.
I'm not going to.
Everybody else is listening. You just sit there and act like you do. You got out of a Jeep and said that. You said I should move my fence. I'm not moving my fence. I have a 10-foot driveway at the end of the street. It's legal. I'll see. I always get nervous when I get in front of this little thing. I've been coming here, well, I first complained in March about the problem at the end of Street with the apartment. In April, I went to Mr. Rivera, who lied to me continuously, and I have documented proof that he lied to me about everything I asked for, everything I asked for. He lied to me, okay? All I wanted was to be able to turn around in my street. I can't do it, all right? And then the motorcycle shop. Mr. Rivera told me that he would take care of the motorcycle shop. I gave him all kinds of proof. He says, "Not enough proof." I have a business card that a old man came and gave me out of his Chevrolet pickup truck covered with coffee. It's an original business card. Is that what you said, I might need to end that motorcycle shop? Gives a building permit, so the guy comes up, garbage laying all over the place for weeks at a time. No building permit issued on the house, none. I took pictures day after day. Did he ever pop a permit on the window? You don't want to answer. I don't have a lawyer, so you can't answer.
No, he's been instructed not to answer.
With the street, what I found out, the city has to follow certain steps to remove the road, okay? You have to show that the road is not beneficial to the public. Guess what I am? The public. I want to build a house at the end of that road someday. I don't die first. So if you sell that street, my $500,000 house is going to worth nothing, all right? The view up there is fantastic. I think I could get $500,000 in the City of Port Jervis for a house. What do you think of that? I came here with pictures and videos of everything about this motorcycle shop to prove it was a motorcycle shop. Gas cans hanging from tuba floors, engines revving up from my bedroom window. I got nothing out of it. All I got was, you're going to lose the end of your street. You got debris in your yard. Did I show you people that came, the debris around my area? Everybody here saw it, except the guy that can't talk. Everybody saw it. One more thing I just thought of. At the end of Canal Street and Hamlet Street, they just did a fantastic job on the house, remodeled the whole thing. Does it have a CO? Yes, it has a CO. Does it have a driveway going across the end of the sidewalk through the handicap ramp on the sidewalk? That's where the driveway is. Does it have an address on it? No address. The law says it's got to have an address. It's got to be three-inch letters, is that right?
Or it's a four-inch letter.
I think it's three-inch.
Four.
Four?
Contrasting in color.
Yes. No address. But it's got a CO. What's he doing? And then Kelly, way back in April, it's amazing Wayne Kidney's here, way back in April, I showed you pictures of everything on the back of my car, of everything that was going on up there, the problems that I was having, and you said, "I don't know, I'll find out." I said, "When Wayne Kidney came up there and looked, he told me that this had to be done, that had to be done, or it should be done." And you said, "What?" He was probably drunk when he said it.
What?
That's right. Yes, you did. You said it, and you cursed.
You know what?
And that lady right back there can absolutely, say whatever you want, Kelly. Ed, just sit back and be quiet, all right? You said it. I have proof.
All right, it's five minutes. You're done.
Is my five minutes up?
Yes, your five minutes is up.
Oh, okay. Nothing else I can say.
I mean, the only thing I can say is that Ed didn't say it, so.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Said it, Wayne. I didn't know you were going to be here tonight. I would have. Got a special speech I have for you.
Anyone else from the public? Not hearing any. Move to the approval of the minutes of the last meeting, which was November 14th.
Motion by Mr. Belcher, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Trove. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Committee reports, finance and insurance, Ms. Trove.
All right. The Finance Committee last met on Wednesday, November 16th. The committee meeting primarily functioned as a budget workshop. Department heads were asked about line items and were asked to review their budgets to see what could reasonably and realistically be cut. Discussions about adding watershed caretaker position, which was removed through attrition, adding an 18th patrol officer, and moving sewer fee funds from general fund back to the reserve took place. If we added these two positions and removed the sewer fee funds, the budget would be 11.92. This is not the final budget. This was just for reference and discussion purposes. The next budget workshop is scheduled for December 6th at 6 p.m., and the next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for December 21st at 6:30 p.m., both here in the council chambers. We also have bills to pay from the general fund, $484,635.36, from the water fund, $43,583.27, for a total of $528,218.63, some of the larger bills. Employee health insurance for November coverage, $181,528.52. Sashuck maintenance for the demo of 184, 186, and 188 and 192 Pike Street, $102,250. And Port Jervis Volunteer Ambulance Corps, $15,000. I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Ms. Trove. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire and Emergency Management, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one communication from the Department Secretary. Appointment of a driver, Morgan R. Moser Jr. Dear Mayor Decker and members of City Council, it is requested that the firefighter Morgan R. Moser Jr. be approved as a driver for Howard Wheat Engine Company Number 4. This firefighter was tested in accordance with the proper requirements such as evoc, pump operator, ladder operations, et cetera, as appropriate to his respective vehicle by Assistant Chief Dominic M. Segalise, and was approved by the fire chief to operate this apparatus. A copy of the member's driver's license was provided on an earlier date. The firefighter's driver's license information was previously entered into New York State Department of Motor Vehicles License Event Notification Service. This service notifies the department upon expiration and renewal of a driver's license, the suspension, revocation, and restoration of a driver's license, changes to a driver's license class and privilege, traffic convictions, reportable accidents, driver license suspension or revocation orders, completion of a training course to reduce insurance premium, changes to hazmat license endorsement, and changes to MED CERT status. This was respectfully submitted by William R. Warner, the Secretary of the Department. I make a motion, we accept, approve this.
I have a motion by Mr. Siegel for driver, second by Ms. Henry. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you very much. The last scheduled meeting was scheduled for November 21st, but it was canceled. The next meeting will be December 19th. And watch our Facebook page, Port Jervis Fire Department, for more information about the Port Jervis Fire Department. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have anything for quoting legislative? Is this local law, I'm assuming it would be 17, does that, oh, this is the one, oh, the one for 16. Is somebody making a motion for this?
So moved.
Mr. Siegel's making a motion, second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion?
Yeah, as the mayor indicated before, this is only to allow the council to not charge a fee should it be desirable to do that. It doesn't say that we won't charge a fee or that we will change it, just if circumstances evolve that would necessitate.
The way that it was described to me was that if there was some emergency situation, excuse me, such as a flood or, you know, mass damage in people's homes, then they had to have a permit, and they were unable to incur all of the cost of the renovations and then the permitting, that it would just be something that the city would waive. Is that correct?
That's specific to the building department.
That was specific to the building.
For that particular thing, because that was the one question that we had to ask at quote. So it would be more of a, you know, a disaster type thing. It wouldn't just be handing out waivers.
Right.
But the local law was written broadly.
Broadly.
So that it could be used. And as a treasurer, I obviously am not going to advocate for waiving fees.
I would never expect that.
Anyone else? Not hearing any, I'll enter, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. One abstention.
Or no, one against.
Okay, Public Works and Environmental Affairs, Mr. Belcher.
The DPDW Committee hasn't met since our last meeting. Next meeting will be December 5th here in the council chambers at 6 p.m. The last meeting was on November 7th, and I emailed the minutes to all the members of the committee and the council, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve those minutes.
I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Ms. Randazzo, to approve the minutes of the meeting. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Garbage and recyclable for the next two weeks is going to be on a normal schedule, and I would like to ask people, even though we haven't made a mandatory water restriction yet, please be careful with your use of water. We've had some rain this past week, and we're supposed to get some more tomorrow, but it's not a measurable amount. So please be careful about your use of water and make sure you have no leaky fixtures in your homes or your business. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Police Committee, Mr. Foster.
Yes, we talked a lot on the last meeting, we had a meeting on November 15th. Couple updates here. There'll be a bicycle giveaway outreach program being conducted in December with the Juvenile Aid Action Outfitters and Eastern Pike Regional Police Department. Their unclaimed bicycles currently being held in the city storage and will be repaired and inspected by Action Outfitters and given to children in need of a bicycle to promote healthy lifestyles and bicycle safety. The DARE program has started at the Adidas School, elementary school. Two Good for Drugs program is scheduled to begin in February 2017. The K-9 patrol vehicle, this is a 2013 Ford, will have the hood repairs due to painting, chipping, and rusting. The repair is necessary and not covered under warranty. The police department purchased two high-efficiency printers using asset forfeiture funding to consolidate printing in the administrative booking and operations areas in effort to save the cost of ink purchases. A feral cat colony has been located and identified by Jeff Ewing. He's our animal control officer, at West End Park. Approximately eight cats are currently living in the park and being fed by unknown residents. Jeff Ewing proposes working together with the Humane Society and other resources to trap, spay, slash neuter, and release the animals to study the effectiveness of the program. The cost will, the cost will be $60 per cat, with $40 being paid by the department and $20 paid by an outside private trap slash spay clinic. Chief Warden and the committee approve to deploy the program and honor the effectiveness. The Port Jervis Police Department and the Orange County Chiefs Association will be meeting with the New York Civil Liberties Union representative to discuss potential legislation mandating the report of specific statistics related to data collection in police departments in accordance with the President's 21st Century Policing Initiative. Two sergeants attended the Mid Hudson Regional Policy and Prevention Summit for subsistence using disorder. The Orange County District Attorney's Office, in partnership with the Orange County Police Chiefs Association, will be sponsoring a use-of-force presentation for community leaders and elected officials, allowing participants to utilize a firearm strength simulator at the academy tomorrow, November 29th. the academy tomorrow, November 29th, and also on December 1st.